Does Joe Paul come in? Everybody else not?
I don't know.
Planning Commission?
Uh, Planning Commission has four questions as well as people.
Dawn is gone?
Uh, Dawn is not gonna be here. I don't know if she's gone.
Right.
Thanks.
David?
I don't know about Joe Paul. I don't know about David. No, Quinn and Dawn is not gonna be here.
Okay.
Uh, Quinn and Dawn are the only ones that called me.
The work would be here. We know Henry won't be here. Henry will help. Henry will help.
Oh, yes, yes.
Will would be here.
How much?
We got one minute for the Storage Commission. One, two, three. Jamie won't be here, right? Will Jamie be here?
Yeah, I think Jamie said he's up here.
Okay. That's four out of five VCA. Just for those that, some of y'all have kind of let me not infer. Tom said that Sam Edwards is running a little bit late on traffic. So we're waiting on Sam to get here. Go ahead and eat fifteen.
Go ahead then.
No, I, I don't eat before you. Well, I did drop down a couple of wontons. Yeah, you can sit anywhere you want. If you want to sit right here, it's fine too.
It's just like this.
Close this to the exit. This pitchforks.
We always need your back.
Sam, would you like to drink water?
Uh, water's fine. Thank you, Jim.
Y'all need a drink, everybody?
And we've got members of, uh, Planning and Planning Commission is here as well.
Good.
Yours was the last minute notice, but they made it.
Again, I'm sorry, took me an hour and forty-five minutes to get from Lebanon. I should've got two thirty-one.
Oh, it's at six fifty to end at seven? Yeah.
Cause there's a movie too.
Yeah. About right time.
Does it happen right after the light?
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
I guess you've been ready for a while. I'm Sam Edwards, so, um, I appreciate the tolerance of my lateness. Um, do we have both Planning Commission Boarders on Appeals? And?
And one Historic zoning on top of it.
Okay, that's good.
Yep, we have, we have a majority of the members of Planning Commission, uh, were exempt if we open them.
And it's county too.
Planning Commission Boarders on Appeals?
Good.
Good.
Okay, good. My apologies for you, the Board of Zoning Appeals, because we've got some bad news for you. I like to start out that way, so you're prepared. It's not that bad. It just means a lot more work for the Planning Commission. I always like to start out and talk about one important thing. Called Dillon's Rule. And I know probably everybody knows what Dillon's Rule is, right? Give me a nod. Make believe. Dillon's Rule is very simple. It was developed by Supreme Court Justice in Iowa, back in the eighteen courts. So what does Iowa have to do with Tennessee? Tennessee adopted the rule. And you won't find it in Tennessee Code annotated. The courts adopted this rule. Basically, what the rule says is the powers that a city or county has. And that means also Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals. Cause you're an instrumentality of the city and county. The only powers you have are those granted to you by the Tennessee General Assembly. So if it's not in this nice green book. You don't have it. So it's actually a black letter law. It's the law that's implied by the back letter law. Give and take here. And those powers that are necessary to implement the power. So basically, what we're trying to say is if it's not here. You don't have it. In, in some instances, it's here, but you still don't have it. So let me give you an example. Tennessee, it's, we do not allow contract or conditional zoning. It's illegal in Tennessee. Other words, you can't strike a deal to zone piece property. Except. If you're in Hamilton County. And Blount County. Why do they get to do it and you don't? Because their representatives and Senator in Hamilton County and Blount County amended the statute to allow, specifically allow jurisdictions within a population bracket. To have contracts and conditional zoning. It just so happens that the only two places in Tennessee that has that particular population bracket is Hamilton County and Blount County. So they can do it. So there's an instance in which power is granted to a city and a county. It's only granted to that city and county. Nobody else, none of the ninety-three counties that are left can do it. So that's a, is example of what. The type of things you have to look out for, uh, in the Tennessee Code annotated. What I thought I'd do to start off is give you what the General Assembly did, uh, I mean, not did to you, what the General Assembly passed this year for your benefits. How many of you been to Nashville and sent it through the General Assembly Sessions? Had one time, didn't you?
Great, loved it.
They all thinking about sausage. It's very good, isn't it? Well, first off. And this is going to affect cities and counties. And it's the Board of Zoning Appeals. We know that under the statute. That. Board of Zoning Appeals what, have three powers? And only three. First power is if you go to the building official and ask for a building permit and you're denied that building permit. Or you ask the building's official a question and you get the wrong answer or you feel you're in it, they're in error. You can appeal that decision if you're aggrieved. By decision of the building official. You can appeal that to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The second power you used to have. Is those for special exceptions, uses permitted on appeal. Conditional uses. You call them different things. They're the same animal. It's where basically. Legislative body through the zoning ordinance has said, this particular use is allowed within a zoning district. If the Board of Zoning Appeals grants that use based upon the conditions that are established in your zoning ordinance. That was a granted power. The third granted power was variances, right? How many of those on the Board of Zoning Appeals? Most of your business variances? You have most of the time people come in and ask for a variance, right?
Yes, yes.
Tears. A lot of tears, right? A lot of people going, you know, you gotta, you gotta grant me this variance because it's gonna cost me so much money. Or. I had the dumbest contractor this side of the state of Georgia. He built me a new house. I'm supposed to have a fifteen foot side yard. Now I only have a ten foot side yard. You've gotta grant me a five foot variance. Those are the kind of things you do get all the time, right? You probably also have the situation where you say, okay, there's only supposed to be one principal structure for a lot. That's a common. Element in the zoning ordinance, one principal structure. But don't you understand? My father-in-law just died. My mother-in-law can't take care of herself, but she doesn't wanna go to a nursing home. Her assistant living. So we wanna put a trailer in the back of the yard. So that she can live in the trailer full. And we love her, but you know, she's gonna pass on sooner or later. And as soon as she passes on. We'll move the trailer. Well, it could also be my mother-in-law died and father, father has to move over there. Also, the daughter's husband ran off with the barmaid. The son ran off, you know, ran off with, uh, somebody in the bar. We won't talk about all that, but you know. It, it goes all the ways from mother-in-law's, father-in-law's, sons, daughters, raising the grandkids, everybody. If you just help me just a little bit. And as soon as, you know. My daughter remarries. And they move off somewhere else. Or as soon as my son remarries and moves off somewhere else, or my father-in-law passes on, my mother-in-law passes on, all those good things. Swear, swear, that trailer will be moved. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years from now. You can't do that. You cannot grant that kind of variance. There's no such thing as an average. Even though, bless their hearts in Nashville. You'll hear they granted a high variance. For structure. There's no such thing. Doesn't exist in Tennessee. It exists in other states, but not in Tennessee.
They do it by stories?
Well, that's what they do in Nashville. They go instead of thirty-five feet, oh, we'll, we'll let you have forty-five feet. All that kind of stuff. But, but you can't do that in Tennessee. It's not legal. Why does Metro give away with it? Body serves them. You know? Metro also has, in the city of Lebanon, bless their hearts, also has specific plan zoning. That's nothing more or less than a contract zone. There's been. One case that I know of. That challenged that in Metro. Now. I'm a land use planner, I'm an attorney. Knows. You know, you gotta argue the case in the right way. So if you argue the wrong point, the judge isn't, isn't gonna decide the point on something you're going on, right? Makes sense. One case that went before court for Metro, they argued not the fact that it was a contract zone, but the fact that they didn't follow the right process as outlined in Metro zoning ordinance. That was the issue. Not whether or not it was illegal or any legal. So a lot of times, it's the fact that the issue was never raised. A lot of times Metro doesn't get sued for high variances because nobody raises the issue. Those kind of issues, you don't raise it within sixty days, the writ of sorcery, it disappears. Lost your chance. So that's why a lot of things happen. It doesn't mean they're good, doesn't mean that they're legal, it doesn't mean you should do it. Here's the only way you can grant a variance. It's gotta be a specific piece of property that was there prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. It has to be based upon the narrowness, shallowness, or shape of that specific piece of property or because of topographic conditions of that piece of property. That in order to get a building permit, they can't meet all those requirements because of that criteria of shape or topography. That is the only basis in which you can grant a variance. Shape, size, the fact that it was there prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Which means what? You can't create a new lot and ask for a variance. Can't have a developer come to the Planning Commission and says, look, I like the new urbanism. I don't want any front yards. I want my house right up there on the, on the street. Or I own my business right up here on the street. And y'all approve this subdivision and I'll go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get a variance and y'all let me put my house or my business right up next to the street, even though the setback line may be thirty, forty feet. Can't do it. Cause it's a newly created lot. The only variance you can grant is from lots that were existence prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Everybody's been to East Tennessee. West Tennessee's nice and flat. We got a little bit of roll here. East Tennessee, got a lot more of that. There's this fellow trying to be really nice to his wife. Gotta have good heart here, thinking about this poor man trying to help his wife. It snows a lot in East Tennessee, right? It's cold in East Tennessee a lot. He had one of those lots. Did that. It's a lot of terrain issues, topo issues on the front. He built his six-car garage. The only place that was flat. So he got his garage in there just fine, all six. But he wanted, felt bad about his wife. Cause she would have to unload, you know, the dry cleaning, the groceries, all of that. Out in the rain and the snow and the cold. But he didn't have room for any garage. Stuff in there. So, you know. Perfect for granting a variance, right? Topographic conditions. The only place he could build a carport for her to unload the groceries was on half the front yard and half the side yard. That's the top of the conditions requirement, isn't it? Why shouldn't they grant that variance? Because it was not on a specific piece of property. The issue was not the topographic conditions on that lot. Because every lot in the subdivision had the same topographic conditions. So it didn't meet the strict requirements under the code for a variance. So I'm giving the, I'm giving the Board of Zoning Appeals a little bit of a, you know, let's start off with them kinda situation, cause you'll be apparent in a few minutes. Also. Errors. Um, everybody makes a mistake every now and then, right? We don't want to, but every now and then. Government officials are humans, make mistakes. I reported, when we go to a UT football game, how many thousands of cars go down I-40? What a wonderful place for a billboard. Right? I mean, thousands and thousands of people are every weekend gonna see that billboard. So the guy that owned the lot said, went to the building official, Knox County. The actual county on this one, I said, Knox County, and he said, I wanna put a billboard on my piece of property right here. How's it zoned? Can I have a billboard here? The answer was, it's zoned properly, yes, you can have a billboard here. Right? Sign me up for a building permit. Building official gave him a building permit based upon the fact that it was zoned properly. He started building. A lady's done to defend it. But never, ever challenged little old ladies. With tennis shoes on. So they're gonna look at it every time. Every time they go up against them, they look at it. What happens? These little old ladies in this neighborhood went to the building official and said, look, have you ever heard of the Highway Beautification Act? Of who? The Highway Beautification Act. He said, it just so happens that you're not supposed to be able to see a billboard from. A road as part of the Highway Beautification Act. Can't build one. He said, but I, I thought it's not one of those roads. It's not a scenic highway. It is a lot of times if you're like tonight, sitting there looking at a lot of things. Sitting there watching cars go by or engine with you. I, I-40 is not a scenic highway, but the lady said, no, it's not. But this side road that comes off I-40 is a scenic highway. So. They convinced him to go out and put a stop work order. Now you can imagine, you know, that the guy with the billboard is not at the counter. Right? Cause he's done the right thing. He went to the building official, he's checked the zoning, he's got the building permit. He's ready to go, he started building. He's about halfway up. On his construction. When the building official comes back and says, stop work order. So naturally, he's a little upset. So he goes back to talk to the building official in his office and said, what is the problem here? Said, you told me I could do this. In good faith, I started building this based upon the building permit you gave me. What are you gonna do?
Sam, can I interrupt you for a little bit? Uh, I'm getting text messages from my IT guy that they can't hear you on the microphone. Can I, can I move you to where your overall, that's not facing this point?
You can just move me anywhere you want to go.
Hey, I'm sorry.
I don't wanna make the IT guy mad.
I'll have you sit over here, buddy.
My problem is it takes me fifteen minutes to get up. Have to excuse me, my knees aren't with me anymore.
Temperature alright in here, Tommy, you need to turn it up a little bit. Everybody alright?
I'm good.
Yeah, toes are not frozen or anything? You've got, I've got some pain that's a little bit strong.
Injured or patient.
Don't let her have that.
I think about all my ailments, fifty-three years ago. Broke my, everything from my waist down, so after fifty-three years, it didn't tell. Is this alright?
Thank you, Tom. Yes, it's.
So, here we go. Guy goes and says, look, you gave me this building permit, what am I gonna do? What do you think the building official has? He says, gee, I, I really don't know. Says, go talk to the county attorney. Uh, most county attorneys are pretty sharp and understand this, but some of them are more related to the county jail, the road department, you know, they don't deal with a lot of planning issues. So what depends, probably he's busy. He did that being a chancellor, we won't get into that. What did he say? The only thing he can think of. Why don't you go see the Board of Zoning Appeals? See if they can help you. So that's what he did. He went back to the building official and asked. He appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals along with the little old ladies. Always a very important group. So what did he do? He goes up there and says, look. I'm a taxpayer. They always say they're taxpayers. Same that operate in the city. I'm a taxpayer. And I did the right thing. I went to the building official, I got my building permit, I started construction, and then all of a sudden. He stops me. It's not right. You know, I got a lot of money invested in a half-built sign. Right? Well. Chairman said, you know. Our building official issued him a bill permit, took his money. Issued a bill permit, he started construction. He, he went to talk to the county attorney, county attorney sent him to us, so that must mean we have some power to do something. We will have a motion. What he did, with his friend, friend made a motion to approve the variance. Ever heard of a turkey motion? Turkey wing motion, since it's just, since we just had Thanksgiving. Very common. Everybody's sitting there. Going, what are we gonna do? Motion's on the floor. He goes this. Once he's sitting a bunch of next to him. Motion second. Perfect wing. So the guy did, and it passed. The little old ladies were not happy. What do little old ladies in tennis shoes do when they're not happy? They go to court. They filed, they were aggrieved by an action of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So therefore being aggrieved parties. They had a right to file a writ of sorcery. Now, what's that? Everybody know what a writ of sorcery is? Why it's important, bring the record up. We're not gonna ask the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, we're not gonna ask the building official to testify on court. We're just gonna bring the record up. We're just going to bring the record up. The judges make, the chancellor's going to make this decision based upon the record, which is another very important fact. So, the little ladies went to Chancery Court, and all of a sudden, they had to go to the Court of Appeals. Because the chancellor didn't rule the way they thought he should, they went to the Court of Appeals, which again, to review the record. Well, the Court of Appeals had a very understanding nature to the poor guy with the, with the building, of the billboard. He understood the problem, they understood the problem. But there was only one, one little minor issue. They looked down and said, under what part of the Tennessee code amedited, does the Board of Design Appeals have any power over federal law? The little ladies in tennis shoes, one. There. You only have the power to look at issues that are in and part of the zoning ordinance. Here, that's it. Can you review something in the subdivision regulations? No. You have no power over the subdivision regulations. That's it. Now, this next part, I'm going to get back to, to the real need of what the general said we did in two minutes, but at this time, we need to talk about the record. I'm from Lebanon. God bless Lebanon and Wilson County, because they messed up so many times on planning and zoning issues. We have great case law from the city of Lebanon and Wilson County. I can say that because I worked for them once upon a time. Yeah, I lost once too, but you know, I lost over a comp, believe it or not, over the placement of a comp in an ordinance, but that's another story. I don't even want to get into because it's so sad. I lost on comp. I didn't write the comp about it, but I didn't write it. City of Lebanon. You know, not like show, well, you've got nice souls, you've got, you know, horseshoes running around all over the place, the show, celebration, all that. It's nice now through here, green grass and all that. Lebanon, we got cedar trees. Why don't we have cedar trees? Because we got limestone, right? You know, it's all like, that's it. And through there. On the west, now this, some of you might remember this, some of you are too young, you won't remember the reference to, to this. This has a western thing to it. Once upon a time, on the western border of the city of Lebanon, outside the city limits, a development occurred. There was no city sewer in that area, so it was developed on city water, but set existence. Set existence, we didn't got to have dirt. They didn't have a lot of dirt, so they had to have large lots. The development was called Bonanza. Years passed. The city grew. As they grew, they annexed Bonanza and adjacent territory around it. Bonanza. Water was extended, sewer was extended. I know you, you're thinking I'm lying on this part. There was a piece of property that was almost of a U shape around Bonanza. You know, you might think horseshoe. Now it could be developed because they had sewer out there. So smaller lots on sewer property inside the city limits were available to this development. On my point, the mayor of the city of Lebanon time, he used to be a city councilperson. That was his ward. Those were his people when he was on the city council. And I've told this many times in front of him, so he's recently passed, but you know, I've told this story in front of him, and he couldn't say much, but you know, he bumbled and grumbled a little bit, but we were friends, so he could mumble and jumble all he wanted to do. He did everything in his power, because you know, municipal planning commission, the mayor has a seat. The mayor or the mayor's destiny. He chose to have the seat. So he did everything in his power to delay the kill, this development, because his old people there, his old ward, they didn't want it. Why didn't they want? Well, I know this never happens here, but you know, every other place I usually go and get to talk, it's a common thing, that when the citizens come, this is what they say for these meetings. And you have to have public comments, right? I mean, you got to, you got to. But let me have to talk to you. Traffic, well, this road out here is the worst road in the whole city. You can't let two more cars go. It's so congested, it's awful. It's a terrible road. If you build that development there, it's going to flood my property. You can build something in the center, that's going to flood their property. Always going, no matter what, it's going to flood their property. While we've got nice, big yards on the rock, Thanksgiving, but we've got lots of big yards, nice big houses, and you're going to let this small lot subdivision come in here with small houses? You know, they're going to have brick fronts on the side and rear, they're going to have aluminum or vinyl. And there probably be going to be gravel driveways through there. On top of that, you're making their subdivision roads connect to my subdivision? So that traffic's going to come into where we live? Don't you know that's going to kill small children, cats, dogs? You know, in the last couple of years, there's been another element, wild turkeys. Wild turkeys get killed a lot on roads now. I came from Sintable last night, I saw a lot of deer out there. But you know, they always say cats, dogs, children. I always wondered, still I kept my mouth shut, but I always wondered, why do you let your kid play in the road? But you know, none of my business, you raise your children the way you raised your children. So you know, they, they always complain about the interconnection of that roads. And then, the wrong kind of people are going to do that. Now, I'm not real sure if the wrong kind of people are, but they're always going to move in. I was at a meeting in Watertown, Tennessee one time. Everybody loves Watertown. 1900 Watertown had 1300 people. 1940 Watertown had 1300 people. 1950, they had 1300 people. 1970, they had 1300 people. The moral of that story is, anytime anybody's pregnant in Watertown, all the old people leave, because they're afraid they might be the next one to go. So, and we were in the meeting, Watertown was going to build a part, first apartment complex in Watertown. The wrong kind of people. Got so bad that they burned the building inspector's barn, they sold his daughter's car and burned it. And a mass of people were at the, the public hearing for the city council. And when the mayor was sitting there, and they were talking about how the wrong kind of people, there are going to be drugs, alcohol, and sex in those apartment complexes. And the guy said, turned to me, and he said, my daughter just graduated from UT, she lives in a apartment complex. That's not happening. But it's always wrong kind of people are going to do something, doesn't matter what we are. You think I'm lying? No. You can go read the court case, B&amp;B Construction versus the city of Lebanon. And in the footnotes, the court says, it's obvious from, from what little bit of the transcripts we can read, that the reason they voted the way they did was because of the comments from the people. What is one thing? Well, let me finish this part of the story. City of Lebanon is very cheap. Oh, what? That's not the right word. I shouldn't say cheap. They're very cost efficient in what they do. So instead of, you know, tape recorded their sessions, you should, so that they could advocate directly. Only problem is, they taped over tapes. So this is what they ended up having to send the tape to the Court of Appeals. This is what the record sounded like. The Lebanon, January 2002, that's what they sent. You couldn't hear anything out of it, maybe three words every minute or two, but that's all they have. Because their minister just said, Joe made a motion to disapprove. So this is one of those deals that, it was an ongoing issue. Matter of fact, the, the original developer was a young real estate agent, he said, I'm fixing to lose too much business, and he sold to B&amp;B Construction. The bones and what, were the ones that bought, they had the money received with the court case. So ended up that the chancellor of Wilson County found against the city. Instead of the city just going, okay, you know, we'll, we'll go back and approve the subdivision, no, they built it to the Court of Appeals. Which they didn't say, should not have done that. And what the Court of Appeals said, you didn't state a reason. Turn something down. Oh wait a minute, this book right here. If you turn something down, you have to state a reason why you did it. Both of you, the planning commission and the Board of Design Appeals, you have got to state a reason why you did something. You can't just say, I moved to turn this down. Well, that's nice, but you have to say why you moved to turn it down. She doesn't talk to the court, and many courts have said, all those nice things those people came in and talked about. What is that worth to the planning commission and Board of Design Appeals? That testimony? What is that worth? Absolutely nothing. What the court said was that that is speculation and fear, not fact. Planning commissions and Board of Design Appeals deal in fact, not fear. You also don't deal in the fact that you're in a meeting and there's 150 of your friends and neighbors out there. And you start counting, and you go, wait a minute, there's my Aunt Martha over there. There's the, but what, Harry and I went to elementary school together. There's my freezer, by the way. You are not going to pass the Del Carnegie course of how to win and friends and influence people by members of the planning commission and Board of Design Appeals. So I hate to tell you, it's not going to happen. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm bad. I'm not a good person, obviously, because I've had a church priest minister and a Baptist minister tell me I was going to hell. That's my question. I don't worry about that because I'm a Baptist. I'm okay. But anyway. What the court has told you is that you have to face, have to face all of your decisions upon material evidence with a binding of fact. Both of you, planning commission and Board of Design Appeals, you've got to do that. What's material evidence? It's things that are proven. Most developers now are people that are parent before you, have done it enough, they bring expert testimony, or somebody who has knowledge of the situation. Whether it's an engineer, a hydrologist, a praiser. If a citizen comes in and says, you're going to devalue my property, how do you know? Did you bring your praiser in? 99.9% of the times, they did. Those statements are worthless too. They're worthless, because they're not based upon any fact. Now I don't have to admit one story. When I was in law school, you know, and I'm not a great, if I was a great lawyer, I wouldn't be teaching these classes, I'd be sitting in a big office somewhere, making a lot of money, a high-rise building in downtown Nashville. I had a very small office in downtown Nashville, by the, by the flat, but anyway. And I was a government lawyer, so we never made a lot of money anyway, but. But when you were there, I always said, it's easier to tell a story for people. Like, they understand stories better than just, they're supposed to go, they're amedited 13-7-208, states the following, and after about third sentence you're going. Material evidence, something that you have to have. Is there any reasons you should listen to the citizens? Well, every now and then, yeah, there is. We were sitting in a meeting one time, planning commission, small subdivision, 25 acres. Flat is this paper. You drive by, the mayor, and see everything right there. Only problem is, when you drove by, it was the middle of July. Had to be a wet July. On a piece of property that never got mowed. So what do you got? You've got grass that's up to your knees, you've got shrub, scrub, whatever growing out there, a little tree over here, a little bush over here, all that, but it looked flat. So we got to, in the, we were in the middle of the planning mission, testimony coming up, public comments, guy said, what about the sinkhole? And we were looking, was that flat again? Contrualization, the sinkhole is noted here. Nothing on this flat indicated a sinkhole. Oh, there's a sinkhole there. I grew up right down the road, right down there is. Well, the planning commission did. But they didn't take him at the word, the guy, there's a sinkhole here, but they deferred. Let's stop saying. Can the planning commission defer a subdivision plan? Of course you can. You just can't defer correct. Once the flat gets this to the planning commission, you have 60 days in which you either approve it or turn it down. And if you wait till the 62nd day, can't do anything about it, it's automatically approved by operational law on the 60th day. So you've got to take an action. If you're going to defer, you've got to do something before the end of 60 days. How do you get around this? Anybody ever played planner's poker? No? Okay. Yeah. I play awesome. Or Mr. Developer. We know that there's a number of issues here with the flats. If, if we were to. We're wanting today, voting today, I'm afraid that there's too many laws to overcome and we would have to probably say it didn't meet the requirements. But would you, Mr. Developer, like to defer the plat for another thirty days so that you can fix the issues here, as we noted in the staff recommendation? Most developers will go, reasonable, I'll wait sixty days, I will defer. I will ask for a referral for thirty days. That sixty-day requirement is only on referrals by the members of the planning commission. An applicant that asks for a referral doesn't count in sixty days. But sometimes you've got to play the牌. Back to the weeds. Most everything you, you hear is speculation. This guy said there's a sinkhole. Planning commission said, you know, we're going to defer, we're going to defer for sixty, for thirty days. And staff, we want you to go out there and look at that piece of property again. So I went with, probably not one of the wife's students out there, I went with them. Hot. Florida was hot. Middle of July, to get out of the different fifty-eighth trucks, start walking the field. Every about, every ten steps, you get down, do that. Seat tics. You crush seat tics off your legs. Sure enough, half an hour into the walk, there was a small sinkhole. Brush and everything was around it so much that you couldn't see the elevation change. So we did something we probably should not have done. We got back in the trucks and we, surveyor's office was within five miles of this location stuff. We just stopped at the surveyor's office on the way back to town. Popped in, sat down on the surveyor for many, many, many years. Said, Robert, we've been out to the Smith Rock. Kind of turned a little tail. Said, Robert, why didn't you tell us there was a sinkhole there? You know, it's Angela Wilson. I didn't think that. So sometimes, sometimes that information that comes from a citizen does have some value. Why in the world should the board of appeals and the planning commission sit there and listen to a bunch of citizens when you can't use their information because it is not material evidence on making the motions? Why do you sit there and let them talk to you? By the way, they talk to you, you don't talk back. When you've had a public hearing, you sit there and let them talk to you. Don't get in a running argument with them.
Say that again.
Yeah.
For all my heart.
All right, one more time. They talk to you, you don't talk to them. Sit there and go, how's it hurt? Well, okay. You hear that? Yeah, or, I'm not going to say anything. You don't say anything? No, I'm not going to say anything either. Don't say anything. Don't get in a running argument. You're, that's not your job. Your job is to take in information. Now, once upon a time, I was a young lawyer. Hard to believe. Didn't have gray hair, any of that stuff. But we're exposed there now, then you do pro bono. When you were a government lawyer, you're supposed to do pro bono, work there now and then try to help people, patients. I got a call from this kid out in Murfreesboro. And he asked me if I could come and help him. I said, well, it's a lot. He said, I'm fixing to be evicted from my house. My landlady kind of kicked me out. But I got a container warrant issued against me. I got to go to General Sessions Court next week in Rutherford County. That you can, can you come and help me? So I went, come up here and talk to you and let's, you know, sit down. Went to Murfreesboro. Went to his house, first thing I noticed, when I drove in, there was a six-foot fence all the way around the backyard. Solid wood. It might have said, you don't want six-foot fence, right? But usually when you have a six-foot fence, there's something going on slightly there. So I asked him, I said, you know, what's the deal with the fence? He said, it's for my dogs. So, what kind of dogs you have? The two rock wilders. They weren't two rock wilders, they were two horses. They were that big. Huge rock wilders. Big dogs. So I asked him, I said, the dogs ever get out? Come home from work, let them out of the backyard, we go straight into the back door and let the dogs spend the night with them and the next day, put them back. Except in bad weather, then they stay in the house all the time. Said, did you ever, did you ever bite anybody? No. Ever kill a cat or another dog? No. They bark a lot. Well, they bark some during the day, but you know, keep them inside at night. But they don't disturb anybody. No. Said, you know, you ever been arrested? Hot. Been ever been laid on your front paws? No. Ever tear anything up? On the whole, house was pretty neat. So I started thinking about why, and the little old lady, she's eighty-five years old. I don't know whether she's in it, she's eighty-five years old. Her husband passed on. Get her all this far to the story. Husband passed on, she had a small pension, she lived mostly on the rent from that house. So that caused me to start thinking, why would the lady want her paying tenant who never missed his payments evicted? What's going on with this? So I knew there had to be another element somewhere in this. So I asked him, I said, I looked at his lease, he disclosed in the lease, but he had two dogs. He didn't say what kind of dogs, he said he had two dogs. So I told him, we're going to bring that into court with us. So the next day, I went into the General Sessions Court in Rutherford County. I walked in a little bit early, not like tonight. Walked in a little bit early. I thought the senior citizens convention was going on. Ever been in a General Sessions Court? Those are the hardest darn benches outside of a Baptist church I've ever seen in my life. Very uncomfortable. You had a whole room packed of eighty-five-year-old plus people sitting on those darn hard benches. And I thought, it must be senior citizen day up here. No. So I walked up to the clerk, this clerk is already sitting there. I said, how many cases does the judge have to discuss? That's not a good sign. He deserved to hold on, but he provides one simple tangle. Should take an hour, maybe. But, you know, okay. I said, well, this crowd here, is it, you know, some kind of tour, senior citizen day? You know, what's going on? She said, no, no, they're here for the trial. Said, they're all here for little Miss Mary. But, oh, that's not a good sign either. So we got into the, to the trial. I went ahead and did my part. Asked the kid, you know, how long he been there, paid his rent, blah, 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 all the things you always ask about, produced the, the lease. Said, this is your lease? Yes. I said, you read line twelve, read this, already figured out it's a dog. Two dogs. So, there it goes, other side, judge, everybody, you know, there was the evidence. I said, damn. Other guy got a call, little Miss Mary there, established it was her house, the fact that her husband had passed on, left her the house, blah, 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 all that kind of stuff. And then he said, why are you asking this, your tenant, to move? And she said, now, this is, I violated one of the rules, being a lawyer. They know what the answer was going to be. When I, when I objected to this question, she said, because my N. And when she got the word N out, I figured the rest of the word was going to be insurance agent. Told me my insurance was going to go up because of those dogs. I took a little bit of a chance. You're not supposed to take chances like that, but I took a little bit of a chance. The judge denied my objection because it was hearsay. Unless the insurance agent was eighty-five years old, he or she was not in that room. But little Mary got off the stand. Next person got up, same scenario, got to the point of, you know, why are you here? Because little Miss Mary spent. And I got to object again. Just ruled in my favor, hearsay. Happened four times. And I thought the judge was going to have a heart. His face was about as red as the label on that coat. Probably right there. I thought he was going to stroke out. He was so mad. So we went to the fifth witness. Same thing, objected again. I thought he was going to pass out. Because it ruled in my favor again. I'm not very smart sometimes. But it dawned on me what that judge was doing. And that's what a lot of people come, when they're coming to the planning commission and board of appeals. They're coming to have their say that day. Their say in court that day. Their say before the planning commission that day, before the board of appeals that day. And that judge was going to let those people, by the way, they are elected, you know, are going to let those people talk. I sat there the rest of the day and didn't open my mouth. Because I already knew I won legally, I won. But, you know, those people got their say. We stayed for three o'clock, by the way. It should have been over at ten thirty. But, you know, it's three o'clock. Judge did rule in my favor. This was the deal. That judge was pretty smart. Not only was he getting votes, but, you know, he was letting those people who came up there and sat on those darn hard benches to have their say. Also, what else was he doing? He was educating. Because during all that discussion, all his discussion back, back and forth with the lawyers, he was basically telling that crowd what was going to happen and why it was going to happen. What, what the rationale and reasons were. Now, those people that left that courtroom that afternoon, they weren't happy, but at least they understood why. That's one thing that's your job, you know, you don't think it's your job, but it is your job as a member of the planning commission and board of appeals to educate people during the process. That's why you have to have discussions, your discussions, in through here. Because you have to base your decision on material evidence and a finding of fact. What is that? It's provable information. As that process goes on, you know, you will say, this John did not comply with all the provisions of the subdivision regulations. This one, this one, this one. Validated this part of the zoning ordinance, this part of the zoning ordinance, and this part of the zoning. You lay it out. So that they know, you're voting because of these issues, not just because you don't like John. You're voting because John didn't do what he was supposed to do in the development process. Now, I hate to say this, but I got another story. You're going to get tired of stories. There was a lawyer in Nashville. There's a street named after one of his ancestors. There's a statue, something about, I'd hear, living in a cave, first Frenchman in, you know, the area. Could end up all who he was, but, you know, pretty clear. Anyway, board of appeals in Metro Nashville didn't like this guy. Because he'd been before them many, many times. And every time they approved something, he did exactly opposite. He didn't do what he was supposed to do. Well, this town, he bought, he stole a house, you know. He was going to turn it into a venue, a wedding venue, you know, you have parties and birthday parties and then, you know, have dinners and things like that. So, you know, there was conditions and they had to leave. So they approved it. On the whole, he couldn't make a go of it, so he sold it. The other guy couldn't make a go of it, he got it back. And he came back with the board of appeals to change that. Well, one of the members of the board of appeals was tired of him, which is a bit of that way. And he said before God and everybody, you don't do what you're supposed to do. When we tell you you have to do X, you do Y. I move that we disapprove your used space policy fact, that you never complied with our rules. He seconded it. Vote was taken. Turned him down. Not being a lawyer, he did that, that wasn't right. So what did he do? Read a search directory. Back up. This was the results, what the court said. I don't care what the guy did. I don't care how bad he is. That's not the issue. The issue is, is this property suitable for that use? That's what your job is, is the property suitable? If he doesn't, if he fails to comply, that's what your co-compliance people are for. They go out there and whoop up on him. Your job is, is the property, do you find that property suitable under the zoning ordinance for that use? Personalities have nothing to do with what your decisions are. It may be some, that somebody that you know is a scoundrel, but you can't turn them down because he's a scoundrel. That kind of deal. All right? In this area, we're talking about a writ of search authority. Why is it important for you to make findings of fact and base it on material evidence? Because that is what the chancellor is going to perceive. That's the record. And you have a writ of search authority filed against you. You don't go testify, the record goes up. If you have a poor record, then your chances of winning or your chances for your city during your county attorney to defend you, you know, bad. Goes down. Give your lawyers a chance to help you. Make motions to state why you're doing what you're doing. Why the person failed to comply, why the person met the requirements. Even though that sounds redundant, you don't need to talk about how he complied, he or she complied with the zoning ordinance or with the subdivision regulations, period. So that's very important. Making it so easy, get tired of it now. You won't go home. You're going to sit there and regurgitate a bunch of things you heard, why don't you approve something? You just want to pass track and say, I make a motion to show proof, right? And then the turkey wing comes out again. So. Now, when you turn something down, planning commission, you have got to say why you turned it down. You just can't say, I moved to turn this development down. You got to state why we turned it down. The reason, the motion has to have the reason. Here's a scenario, I've seen play out more than once. Don't fall into this trap. I don't know how many members of the same county can have up to fifteen, so it has up to ten, so I don't know. You got, but anyway, I'm going to do with ten-member planning commission, okay? I don't know what you got, but do it ten members. Well, when it comes up. You sit there, and you move to approve. You sit there, and you move to approve it. You do the dark between, and you hit her, and she, she makes the second motion. Vote is taken, chairman calls for the vote. The vote is two, four, eight against. What is the status of that flat? It's still a law. It's still a law, because you didn't vote, kind of the flat down. You just voted not to approve. Remember the sixty-day rule? You gotta either approve it or disapprove it within sixty days at the time. On the sixty-first day, that's all you do. That developer's gonna come back in and say, please sign my flat because it's been approved. Because you didn't even turn it down. The law says, you love that the law says. Statue says that you must state a reason, providing why you turned something down. So, when your motion fails, somebody on the other side, the right-hand side of the eight, one of them has to turn around and make a motion to deny the flat based upon the following reasons. You have to state the reasons. Isn't a vote to be taken, they need to be eight to deny. You two voted against that motion, but you still want it. You have to state, to turn down a flat, you have to state why you're doing it. Just turn down the motion to approve, you gotta turn around, do the motion to deny. You don't, no. Let's be real. How many developers are gonna know that in the law? Well, one or two of them gonna figure it out, get to a place, don't tell the others.
I've got the case, I've already been. Yes, that's why I tell them all the time. Motion to deny.
If you don't, you're gonna be in trouble. Okay, now, let me, let me tell you what the general assembly did. No lie. I don't know what time it is.
Twenty minutes till seven.
I was supposed to quit at seven, but, because I'm late, you're gonna have to stay. Not gonna let you go.
Didn't get a second on that.
I know. I wasn't anticipating it. When you notice that time, you should get my head down. I'm looking up here. Border Zone Appeals, you know what one of your powers has always been in the statute. Power to approve special exceptions, uses permitted on appeal, conditional uses, whatever you call it, it's all the same amount. What it is, is the NA zoning district, here are lists of different uses that can go in the legislative body. Whether it's the city council or the county commission has adopted this zoning. Said, here are other uses that are allowable if they met certain conditions. And the border zone appeals, it's your job to review those conditions and make sure they're met. Now, I like the subdivision in a way, if it meets all the requirements. You have one chance to vote on it, one only, and that's to vote to approve it. And you stated in the motion why you're approving it, because it met all the requirements. If you have five requirements, they meet four, you vote it up. Because they didn't meet all five. They gotta meet two requirements. Now, before, for umpteen, umpteen years, since, I guess, nineteen thirty-five, which is when the planning legislation was adopted in Tennessee. And we all know why the planning legislation was adopted in Tennessee, don't we? Nineteen thirty-five? What happened in the nineteen, early nineteen thirties in Tennessee?
Old vision.
Ever heard of TVNA?
Yeah.
Because of TVNA, they pushed the general assembly saying, you got them planning made legislation. So, that's why we had a TVNA. Since nineteen thirty-five, the border zone appeals has had that power to approve special exceptions. Now, the deal with those are, who writes the special exceptions? The planning commission, right? Because they're in the zoning ordinance. So you're just following what the planning commission put in with zoning conditions that they put in and then the legislative body adopts. That's what you're ruling on. I gotta do this. I hate to do it, some of them. Another Wilson County case. Landfills. Everybody loves the landfill or rock floor, right? I mentioned, there's a landfill on the agenda in nineteen thirty. This building's not big enough to hold everybody, and this is what I'm gonna object to, landfill. Well, a long time ago, EPA did what they call a subtitle D regulation, subtitle D regulations, which restrict their landfill regulations before, dug a hole, posted up in it, covered it up. I guess you hurt the weight every now and then. They got a lot tighter, saying you gotta have leachate collection systems, liners, all this kind of, you know, you gotta test, done cover every so often, you know, burnt away, all the strict stuff. If you had a approved subtitle D landfill, what island do you wanna live on? Because it was worth that much money. The developers and lots, we had one of those. He sold it from one of the big people, and one of the presidents of the bank, one of the local banks, quit just to handle the business. True story. So, they're worth a lot of money, you get one of those things. So this fellow, Mr. Hammettola, was pretty smart. He had his property, and he was in an agricultural district in Wilson County, and in an agricultural district in Wilson County, as it used to be, on a field. You could have a landfill. The only problem was, what was their condition? One, you must meet the requirements of the state of Tennessee for a landfill. Period. That's it. So, Mr. Hammettola was pretty smart. He hired a very good law, a very good engineering firm out of Nashville. They came down and did all the tests. Going to hope the property was perfect for a landfill. Had all the good stuff that a landfill is supposed to have in order to support the basis of the landfill itself. So they'd already gone to the commissioner, and Nashville Environment Conservation said, here's our findings. Can you grant, can you write us a letter saying you need to grant a permit? And he said, but, excuse me, based upon these conditions, I can write a letter at appropriate time and say that this is approved. Approved site. So, Mr. Hammettola went to the border zone appeals in Wilson County, which should have been what they no brainer. He met and proved that he met the condition. All he had to do was submit that to the border zone appeals, and they should have granted that special condition he's permitted on a field for a landfill on his property. Should've been a five-minute discussion. He walked in the room, what happened? Anybody have a guess? One, sure. Every farmer within a hundred miles was down there. And I learned something out of that, reading that case. Never knew this. One of the objections from the farmers, and there were some dairy farmers. One of the objections was that when you drove the garbage trucks down the road, and a milk jug would fall off and land in the farmer's field. Like how the dairy cow would eat the milk jug because it was trying to get at the milk, and it would kill the cow. Always thought, that's a bunch of bull. What's happening to you? Come on, y'all gotta work with me, get it right. It's hard doing the stand-up stuff every now and then. I figured if it was a goat, a goat would eat it, no problem, you know, kind of thing. But I did find out years later, from a number of UT people that they worked in the Institute of Agriculture, that, yep, they will, and they can, and they will die. But anyway, room full of these people. And they were complaining that the state wanted, that the birds were gonna eat their, their corn. The road was too narrow, you know, most of them were on wells, and the landfill's gonna pollute their wells. You know, leachate collection system was gonna fail, and, you know, it's gonna run out all over the place. We wanted berms and mounds and landscaping so that you couldn't see this landfill. Kind of down the county road needed to be widened, all this kind of good stuff, you know. They were abandoning all this, because that landfill's gonna be a terrible thing. So what did the border zone appeals do? They approved it. Not just because you had the letter, but they added all those conditions that all those people were asking for. Now, the crowd wasn't real happy, but still, they got what they wanted. Mr. Hammettola said, thank you, left the room, went down across the street, hired his neighborhood lawyer, red a searcherory, the chancellor saw it. Chancellor heard the record, looked at the zoning ordinance, and remanded it back. That's what chancellors would do. They remanded back for you to do the right thing. What do you think the border zone appeals did? Yeah, yeah, they did that. They removed all those conditions. And then, because the room was still packed with the farmers and the neighbors, they added more conditions. And then passed it. Went back up to the chancellor. The chancellor basically said, I told you to take those conditions out of there. Said, I'm not remanding it. The chancellor did something I've seen very few chancellors ever do. He approved it. He said, I ordered it approved. Then it went on up to the court of the builders, but, you know. The court basically said, we don't do planning by ambush. We don't approve subdivisions by ambush. We don't disapprove subdivisions by ambush. We don't disapprove things by the border zone appeals by ambush. It's gotta be written down. If it's not written down, you can't do it. What does that mean? You take that better feel every now and then. You sit in Mr. Hammettola's case, they sit there, and they should have approved it, knowing that, you know, I hate to approve this, but, you mean it's all the requirements. Does that mean you let the next landfill come in with just those requirements? No. What it means is, is the border zone appeals talks to the planning commission. Because who can amend the zoning ordinance? Border Zone Appeals does not have that power. Do not have that power. Only the planning commission can make a recommendation to approve amendment to the zoning ordinance to add additional conditions or to do anything to the zoning ordinance. It's got to go to the planning commission first. Then, they make the recommendation to the legislative body. Then, the legislative body votes on it, either to approve or to disapprove it. Unless you're Wilson County. God help them. They had a case, and it's still ongoing right now, where they're trying to preserve their agricultural areas by increasing the lot sizes. Seven forty thousand's per acre, they're increasing them to eighty thousand's per acre, on and on and on. So, you know, that's a matter of choice. I'm not gonna say that's right, wrong, or indifferent. You gotta go by the process. So what happens? Amendment to the zoning ordinance was generated first by members of the legislative body. You can do that, you can do that. But it has to go through the planning. So the planning commission sent it back? Saying, we don't, you know, we don't like this part of the county. But, a member of the legislative body then amended that, the resolution in the county, amended that resolution, and changed some of the figures around. They didn't send it back to the planning commission. The statute says, the legislative body changes it, it's gotta go back. They didn't send it back. What the chancellor said? They said it was void at its inception. It's no good. They removed that section. Now the county's trying to do it the right way, and the city, whether they do it or not. But you gotta follow the process. You don't, you don't understand the process, you need to ask what the process is. Because if you don't want to avoid the little old ladies in tennis shoes, because they don't understand the process, they're gonna work on it, they're gonna be there, and they're gonna understand what you're supposed to do. You better understand what you're supposed to do. Nobody wants you to be lawyers, right? We got enough of those. But you gotta understand the law. You gotta understand the law. If I was a planning member of the planning commission, I have enough enemies as this is for the border zone appeals. I'd have the following documents at the meeting for every meeting. I'd have a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, because I assume that's the process that you go by, it's Robert's Rules. Do you understand Robert's? And that's great. I've got Robert's Rules of Order, I've got Robert's Rules of Justice, I've got Robert's Rules of Order for those people who don't understand Robert's Rules of Order. And I've got Robert's Rules of Order that is so simple that anybody should understand it, it's not still got it. It can be very complicated. But if you understand Robert's Rules of Order, that's great. Whatever process you use, abide by it. Follow, okay? That's, that's the key to it, abide by it. So, the thing about the planning commission and the border zone appeals, you follow your own rules, you follow your own procedures through there. Yes, the general assembly said, once upon a time, you got to allow people to speak, right? It's up to you to determine how long that's due. I'm not here to tell you what's the right amount of time. It can be two minutes, three minutes, four minutes, whatever you want. The key to it is, is you write it down. You put it in your procedure or your bylaws, you have five, two minutes. Then, at every meeting, the chair, before the meeting starts, the chair needs to repeat that. Saying, you have two minutes. Next thing the general assembly did too, you know, a couple of years ago, they said, rich laybodies, you gotta make your agenda available within forty-eight hours of the meeting, right? I thought that was a power alarm, that was one of their. Sorry. I meant worse now. What's that? Now they came back and amended, because the law is written so that it's just legislative bodies. That was effective. And now they changed that so that it is planning, specifically said, planning commissions and border zone appeals. So, now you have to have your agenda available forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, just like the city council or the county legislative body. So that agenda has to, on our website, posted or out there. That's one thing they did for you this year.
Actually, both the city and county went ahead and voluntarily did that for all of its bodies. As soon as that law changed in twenty-three.
Yeah.
Just adopted it, and both county and city did, across the board, for everybody.
For everybody. Which is, you know, weren't required, but.
But we did it anyway.
We did it anyway. Now, now we're gonna get to what really they did to you. That's another thing, you know. You know, they did, they did, because the building commissioners, other Board of Zoning Appeals, or other administrative officials, grant or deny building permits, challenge, inform, and writing the person receiving the grant or deny the person's right to appeal for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So now you have to formally, let people know, along with the fact that, you know, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, has to let people know that, oh, you have the right to appeal this to the chancellor's court. So you gotta tell them. You know, usually, we've got, "Well, if you figure that out, that's good for you." But, you know, we didn't have to tell them, now we have to tell them. All right, so special exceptions, leases permitted on the field, all, all those things used to be one of the three designated powers for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The General Assembly removed that special exception out of the designated powers. So only the designated powers now has two. The field, because it's been agreed by the decision of the building official, advance. Then, they created a second section under the Board of Zoning Appeals powers. And this is what they did. By the way, I don't know why they did this. I was just told, you know, I spent thirty years up there, and I don't go back. I just read now, I don't, I don't come back. Too scared. They get, they get scared and weak in the knees, I can't, I can't do it. I cry a lot, too. Now, the local legislative body, this is where the Planning Commission comes in on this, even though it's a point of design plan. You've gotta write this into the zoning ordinance, you've gotta recommend this into the zoning ordinance. A local governing body made by ordinance for the cities by resolution by the counties, delegate initial jurisdiction over specific special exceptions for interpretation of an apple for other divisions, decisions and special questions which the Board of Zoning Appeals allows to pass, to the building commissioner or other administrative official. What does that mean? It means that when you have a use condition, conditional use, special exception, the building official will make a judgment call and rule on whether that should be granted or not, based upon, hopefully, the conditions that are in the zoning ordinance. It is that person's responsibility to either grant it or deny it. Then, the Board of Zoning Appeals becomes an appellate body, so the person can appeal the decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now remember, the code says, "All your decisions have to be based upon material evidence of finding a fact." When the General Assembly said the board's jurisdiction is appellate only, what kind of appellate jurisdiction is? Do we have a new hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals? Or do you just bring whatever the record the building official has, hopefully, develop a good record, bring it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, like you would a Rivas or Chorory, and you just review that record? Or do you bring the applicants in and have another hearing? Because you, in the appellate process, you can do either one of the two. But did the General Assembly tell us which one to do? No, they didn't. So, we know that the board's jurisdiction is appellate only. The local building official or other minute, I gotta read this. The other administrative official shall make the initial ruling based on the criteria set forth in the ordinance. Which means, you have gotta put conditions in there. You've gotta put conditions, planning commission, you gotta write conditions. I was in Centralville, in the county, last night, and they were going, "What do we gotta put in?" I said, "Whatever conditions you feel like is necessary to support that deuce kind of thing there." Nobody's gonna write that for you. You don't have to write it.
Can we review just a minute?
All right.
Can we review this for just a second?
Sure.
So, under special conditions, planning commission sets the special conditions.
Oh. Sets them in this respect. They have to recommend to the legislative body an amendment to the zoning ordinance that covers that, that area of creating special conditions under whatever zoning districts you want to manage. And they could go under any level, they could go under commercial, industrial, or you go under deeply residential. So, in any zoning district in which you feel like it's a planning commission, you should have special conditions, it's up to the planning commission to draft an amendment to the zoning ordinance to send to the legislative body for them to adopt that provision for the zoning ordinance. Then, the Board of Zoning Appeals has the power to force that or act under that provision. But it has to come from the planning commission first. So, Board of Zoning Appeals, you're alive, you know, you have some thoughts. You know, you need to have a joint meeting with the planning commission and go, "This is what I think we need to do." This is why staff needs to do that, you know. That's where you gotta depend on a lot of stuff, is what your staff is gonna recommend you do. I've seen some people write some conditions that are way out there, I mean, totally unreasonable. Nobody could ever meet them, kind of deal. You know, you don't want that, you want things that'll work well. Because if you put something in your zoning ordinance that's totally out there and left field, that nobody can ever meet, you know, then you've got a problem. I'll, you know, once upon a time, talking right here, for a point, once upon a time, there was a zoning ordinance I was working with, with the city, and the front said that line. Business station, close X amount of feet. Every month, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, there was a variance that was coming in, don't get me started. There was a variance in the, there was a variance of applications that came in almost every month for canopies. Especially like gas stations, convenience markets, they had canopies out in front of the building, took the gas pumps, those kind of things. Because they were always too close to the road. We were always, they were always having to, well, they were always approving them, even though they weren't supposed to. They were always approving. And by now, I stopped them one night, and I said, "Look, it's obvious, there's something wrong with your zoning ordinance. You're having a variance coming in almost every night that you meet on a canopy, then you need to look at your zoning ordinance to see what's wrong. Why are you having so many variances coming in for you? There's something in that zoning ordinance that's not workable." So, my suggestion to you is, yeah, you gotta put in conditions. Every now and then, some of them might not be workable. That's okay. You can always amend things, you can add things and take it away. You just gotta go from the staff to the planning commission and to the legislative body to add something or take away. If it's not working, fix it. If it's not enough, fix it. You know? Are you gonna get beat up by the legislature body every now and then? Sure. Sure. You're gonna get burned down, you're gonna, you know, get yelled at? That's part of your job. These, these kind of things happen. I worked with a group one time, and I was having to go before the legislative body, huge crowd. And the chairman of the planning commission got nervous about the amendment to the zoning ordinance. He called the sheriff, he asked the sheriff to send a deputy over. The crowd was gonna be wild, I guess. So, I walked up, I asked the deputy, and I started talking to him, and I said, "Why are you here?" He said, "The sheriff sent me because the chairman said it's gonna get rough out here." Well, he could invite his way out of a paper bag, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't even put up much of a resistance. So I told him, I said, "I did something very, very mean, I do that on occasion." I located him, and I said, "Look, I said, 'You're right, there's gonna be a whole bunch of people out here, and they're gonna be mad.'" I said, "Meeting's gonna start, and I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna, you know, give them a recommendation, and they're not gonna like it, and I said about two minutes before I'm through, I'm gonna turn to you." "Mr. Sheriff, I'm turning to you." And I'm gonna nod my head, in any courtroom, there's a back door for the judge to come in, right? I said, "I want you to hit that back door." And I said, "Hold the door, I'm gonna run, and you stand there with that door shut and keep those people away from me." Two minutes before I was through, I looked over at him, and I nodded. Got through talking, I turned around, he went nowhere to be found. He hit the back door, and he was gone. So, the point is, you know, yeah, it's not always pleasant to go before the legislative body. How many of you are on the legislative body? The city council person, danger? Yep. Y'all don't look that mean. Did it hit anybody that comes up?
She did, I can see it. Point fingers. You're denying lies.
See, but usually, it's one county commissioner against the other county commissioner, working up on each other. I had the city council, one time, offer to take me fishing with fifty pounds of change.
Sam, do you cite the code that you just discussed about those changes?
With this change?
Yeah.
For this particular one is thirteen seven dash, thirteen seven dash two oh seven. Okay? And then, you have the other same one with county zoning was going to be thirteen seven one oh nine. Okay? The other one's decimal, you know, obviously, yeah, two seconds. So, I'm right now reading something decimal. All right. We talked about the building official ordinance, exponential ruling set by criteria in the ordinance. I explained, have to have criteria within the ordinance, yes, based on some reason. Then, the delegated ordinance, because, you know, the way they talked about it, they just would you say, "Okay, here's..." "We're delegating these deuces as special exceptions." Why they use that language, I have no idea. The delegated ordinance must specify which special exceptions have been delegated to the local building commissioner or other administrative official. Well, they all are, because they took them out of the general rules of, you know, what are the powers of Board of Zoning Appeals, they exempted them out of there, removed them, so the only way you can have special exceptions through this new section. I don't know what they were thinking when they were saying that. You gotta choose which ones would do that. The ordinance must include, this is, I'm saying it again, must include specific and objective standards by which special exceptions are allowed. In other words, back to provable. Provable. A request for a special exception must not be denied based on health, safety, or general welfare unless those basis are defined in the ordinance. Now, wait a minute. Where have we heard health, safety, and general welfare before? That's the basis. That's the basis of why you have something to begin with. So now they want you to define it? All right. Remember our sixty-day rule? Now we have a hundred and twenty-day rule. If the building official makes a request, makes a determination on a special exception, and he sits on it, past a hundred and twenty days, it is deemed automatically approved by operational law. If the Board of Zoning Appeals sits on a request over a hundred and twenty days, it's approved by operational law. So if you don't wanna make a decision, don't do anything. That's not the right thing to do, because that's not your job. Your job is to make decisions, right? That's why you do, that's why you're here. That's why you're paid this high salary. That's why people love you in their community. Well, some of you might be, but I don't think so. Most of us were not. But I had, I had a doctor one time offer the mayor, you know, campaign contribution, and he did farming. Election was held, and I waited a couple of days, and I waited a week. Waited three weeks, mayor never said anything to me. So I finally went to the city hall, and I said, "Mayor, I said, I know Doctor Sonso, he gave you a campaign, offered you a campaign, he's interested in your farm." He said, "Still have a job?" He just looked up at some desk, and said, "I'll be all some, that's politics, go back and work." People aren't done, you know, but don't try to get you number one, but, you know. So what? You're doing a public service. You're not doing this because it's fun, you're doing it because it is a public service, and you make sure that you have good planning in the county, you have good planning in the city. You're not here to represent any one certain group or any one certain board. You are here to represent what is good planning, what's the right decisions to be made, what are the proper grounds for your decisions, not to represent anyone, but you're here for the whole community situation. So, you know, I've heard it too many times, my people, my people. Your people, because the whole city is your people, it's a whole town. So it's a, it's a fun job. And I personally say thank you, one of us, for doing what you do, because, you know, there had to be something else you wanted to do on Wednesday night. I don't know what else it could have been, but you came here to listen to this, and why? Because one of the reasons, and believe it or not, again, I was in Pickman County, Centralville last night, and the director came up to me before it started and said, "Well, you know, I had one of my members resign this afternoon." I said, "Oh, I hate to hear that." He said, "Yeah, they didn't wanna take a train." Now, you know, that's kinda like saying, "I didn't really want them to learn to read." We ask you to sit on planning commissions, we ask you to sit on Board of Zoning Appeals, and we need to give you the information that's necessary for you to understand what you're supposed to do and how to do it. To help you make the best decisions you can possibly make. Have you ever made a bad decision? I had a bunch of them, you know, but guess what? Just because you made a bad decision doesn't mean you repeat it. There's no such thing as precedence in land use decisions. Just because you've boomed up on one case, one issue, doesn't mean you have to follow that initiative every time. Remember, land is, you know, dispatch, it's different. There's no two pieces of property looks the same, at least, that's what they used to call them in property law. No two pieces of property are the same. No two issues during it are gonna be exactly the same. The key to it is, is make sure you have good rules within your own subdivision regulations, good rules within the zoning ordinance. Who amends the zoning ordinance? We discussed it. The planning commission has to send it up to the legislative body.
Right.
Who amends subdivision regulations? The planning commission does, that's as far as it goes. As far as it goes. You do it, you have to have a public character, you do it. If you make a mistake, then once you run it, you know, I won't, I won't. I used to work for these people once upon a time, many, 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 many years ago, local planning. Y'all remember when you used to have a local planner, maybe, if you went to Nashville and gave you assistance and they'd go back to Nashville and come back once a month, it's not like that. Those people, that's all they had, that's all the help that you get, was those people, the circuit riders. They did a good job, but like a lot of circuit riders, you know, they, they would, like a subdivision regulations or zoning ordinance and they would put, you know, they wrote it for the city of Shoville. Then they go down the road a little bit and they go to Cannon County and they would strike out Shoville and write Cannon County and use the same regulations. Well, you know, nothing wrong with that. As long as what your right is suited to that particular community. What was good, and I was in Moore County, you know, to use the phrase, and I looked at their subdivision regulations. Don't think it's up there. No way Moore County needed that kind of subdivision regulations. But it was easy to, you know, strike the word fine line and put the word Moore County. But these are geared to you. So therefore, what's good for Shoville may not be good for War Trace. Or may not be good, you know, for going down to Lincoln County. There, there, what you deem to be your best policies, which leads me to talk about a last thing, because I know you wanna go home sooner or later. I could be here till eleven thirty, but that's eighty-four, seven hours, four. I got off at tired. You know, normally, four hours is, which you normally, exactly. Your plan, do we both have plans? County have a general plan? City have a general plan? Guess what? That's your framework. Your zoning ordinance and your subdivision regulations are there for one reason, that's to help you implement that plan. If you haven't looked at that plan in a couple of years, you know, I'm not telling you what to do. It's just always wise to check that, because there we have then, things change a little bit. You know, I always talk about, you know, our good friends in Rutherford County in Smyrna. A number of years ago, when the Ridleys were mayors of Smyrna, you know, and the air force base was down there and they didn't decide to close the air force base, everybody thought Smyrna was gonna, is gonna go away. You know, the last, last person in Smyrna turned out the whites, was Dale. What happened? Nissan got dropped down. You know, anybody ever been to Spring Hill? Spring Hill didn't have a whole lot a number of years ago, right? They had the Farm Bureau office, then they had cows and corn. You know, and then what happened? Saturn. And you know what Saturn told the people down there before they would open up that facility? They told Spring Hill, you have to have plans, oh, we're not gonna come down there. We're not gonna have an investment. But they, every company would ever say that to you, and most of us, they're considering what they're investing. What? You know, what's, what's your plan really say? The plan, each jurisdiction says, what do we like about the county? What do we like about Shoville? What's the good thing? What do we want to keep doing? What are the things we don't like that we need to change? Because we don't like them anymore, and what are the needs that we have that are not being met? Whether it's housing or infrastructure or whatever. And by the way, you can turn down something if you do this. You can turn it down for inadequate infrastructure. You can say that it's premature development if they do not have the infrastructure to support it. But you have to base that on what, the facts of the, the infrastructure. You just can't say, you know, ah, water might need, almost it, that's what, what is capacity, what is that? Development's gonna be losing, so you must have a blog out, you must have facts in order to say, no, you can't do something based on that. It just means that we delay it. The last thing, because I know you, you need to go home. Hopefully, my drive is reduced a little bit, going back, maybe the traffic's not, not bad. You know, we need a new police substation. Mister developer, you got a hundred acres right over here, why don't you give us this half acre, acre right here in this corner for a police department, or a fire department, or this five acres for a new school? And the worst one I ever heard was from another jurisdiction in Wilson County that I haven't named. Never mind, we'll get into that. Our senior citizen center needs a new roof. We might approve your development if you put a new roof in our senior citizen center. That is called a taking, do not do it. Do not do it. How convenient, some guy might come in and say, well, I'm willing to, no, no. Do not base any approval for a permit, for approval of a flat, for approval of a rezoning, based on you giving them to give the government something. Do not do it. Now, you can get away with it a hundred times, and the hundredth time, somebody's gonna sue you for taking federal tort. As a matter of fact, a couple of years ago, why the General Assembly did this, I never know. They regurgitated the law on taking. The state statute, it said, you must put it in your subdivision regulations. This statement about, you know, what is a taking? And what's, what is the elements that you have to, you have in there? Even though the law is very clear, you know, of what, what is a taking? Our General Assembly said, here, you gotta put it in your own subdivision regulations. So, I'm sure y'all have done that, since that was two or three years ago. Um, and added that, that statement to your subdivision regulations. I, I say that to a number of places where I go and they go. Tell me again what the taking is? Now, that'd be another hour and a half talking about takings. Just, take our word, don't do it, you know, don't do it. So, I've done all the talking. Y'all?
Got a question?
I have a question, please.
When the state legislature, all their wisdom goes through
I think that's an oxymoron, you know.
With their plan to, uh, have T. Deck or whoever take over the siding of landfills without any okay from city, county, or whatever, that would completely disarm our, any of our zoning regulations.
On that, on that aspect of land building, they're already disarmed in a way. There are already exceptions in the law that the General Assembly is already taking things away from. You realize that a double wide modular built house has to be considered a stick built house. You can't regulate a modular home. If you give something, you can't do that. The feds pretty well and the state pretty well on wireless systems, they took that away from churches. Let's say Religious Freedom Act. You can't substantially burden my exercise of religion. They've taken that away from where you can regulate where a church can go. So, yes, they can do that and they have done it and they continue to do it every year. So, I'm not shocked and I'm all, can they do it? Yes, they can. Is it a good thing? No, it's not. You got a House member, you got a senator. I remember Pete Phillips, many, 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 many years ago. Pete, you know, there was Phillips' method of percolation, y'all remember that? He passed it very short window of opportunity on, you could actually blast this forward, but it's empty now, because Mr. Pete's constituents had, had a problem. So, there was like a six month window, so it was Phillips' method of percolation. A good member of your General Assembly can, and I'm not saying yours is not good, don't get me wrong, just saying, a good member of your General Assembly is something, somebody you should have constant contact with. And, you know, when these kind of things pop up, you know, don't take very many phone calls for then start looking, you know, at an issue. This bill about the rezoning appeals, nobody knew about it. I mean, literally, nobody knew about it till the very end of the session. It was the governor's bill. You know, where it came from, nobody knows. Who wrote it? Nobody knows. It came out of his legislative package at the very end of the session. Somebody's ox got dorked somewhere in the state of Tennessee and they complained to the governor and that's basically what it's actually dropped in. Sometimes you have the ability to help stop things and sometimes they drop things in at the very last minute and you don't have much of an opportunity. Um, but, you know, every legislator I've ever dealt with, worked with, they respect the people from back home. So, you know, the bill comes up to let the department take over siding of landfills? I'd be on the phone.
Can I ask a question on this takings issue? Uh, we've got a specific developer who I won't mention that has that development in front of the city right now. And part of their, uh, process they're going through right now is they have offered a portion of the land to the county for a county school, uh, because it's a possibly non-public development. Um, does that offer, I mean, legally, how does that fall under that?
Let me add specifics to that. That was their idea because they're trying to reduce their footprint in that area. That was their idea.
Yeah, they brought it to us, we didn't.
They said, you know what? Because you all are concerned, you know, how much, a lot of things that they were having to do on their traffic study. So, and this is still outgoing, I need to be careful on this, but that was their offer to provide that land so that it reduces how much they develop in it. And so the county, actually, the, the, the school system has a memorandum with them, they're not obligated to put the school there. So that was not a city requirement, that's their plan.
Yeah, the developer brought it to us, we didn't ask.
And it's not to us, it's to Beffer County.
And what I would, what I would have to say, when that was coming for the planning commission, is that this is not a consideration of this planning mission, whether or not we approve or disapprove that development. That, that offer has no bearing whatsoever on, I make it very clear, it has no bearing. As a matter of fact, we don't, you should, if you're even gonna negotiate that, maybe you should just cut that out of your development totally to, you know, handle that in another situation. We don't wanna even see it, because we don't want that to be a trigger for our approval or disapproval. Because what taking all says is, if you use your power of approval to acquire something, and it can be property, it can be money, but the courts of agency, money is property. And if you require them to pay a fee in lieu of, that's a taking. Metro Nashville had to deal with, you know, you had to put a sidewalk, or you paid to a fee. Well, the sidewalk, money could be built on the other side of town, you don't have to deal. That's a taking, you can't do it. What they were talking about, if they think that that is a, if there's even a glimmer of a process that they think that is going to influence, to grant anything, denial of that development, that she, that she claims, that's no, not a consideration.
But anyway, we'll say no. Like you say, okay, we're gonna take it up as a separate issue later, so already, your own planning commission's alive, so let me stop that.
You can't, except, you know, what you need to do is, before they even bring it up, if they start to bring it up for the planning commission, you need to cut it out. And, you know, you're exactly right, like the old logger movies, you know? Once it quit beating your wife, you know, the S. Jack kinda deal, and, you know, quit, all the jury knows, well, boy, he beats his wife whether it has anything to do with that, that law. And a lot of people use that, you know? They know they're not supposed to ask that question, they know they're not supposed to make that statement, but they're planting that seed. That seed is where the appearance of improvacy is just as bad as the improvacy itself. Even though it's not, I mean, you're not doing anything wrong, but the appearance of doing something wrong, it's, you know, if somebody in the audience hears that, it's spread all over town for, you know, breakfast the next morning. You know, it just delays people talks. Well, you buy the planning mission, girl, are you, there's offering, you know, two or three acres over here and they're gonna, they're gonna prove it no matter what, you know? No, you don't even let them start to talk about that. It is not an issue and it has to be cut off real early. Because again, you're right, if they talk about it, then somebody's gonna say, that was part of that approval process. And it, it's real touching, now, you know, I have people all the time, say, well, we know that, you know, a water line needs to be approved, we know that an intersection needs to be approved, we know that a sewer line needs to be expanded. Since that's a separate issue that you deal with before the city council, the planning commission has no business discussing that needs to be done. You discuss that directly with the council or the county commission and then you run your development before the planning commission. It has, you have no, planning commission, there was no issue to deal with in that kind of discussion. Should not even have it at the commission stage. And that is, that's a, you know, a rule that's way up here. You know? And it's not necessarily one I know that can always be followed, but that's the golden rule, shall we say? This is what you're really shooting for, uh, if you can make it, that's great, and I know sometimes we fail. But don't let, make sure, if you do fail, it's, if there's a clear, concise statement that it's not part of your consideration period. And if you ask for it, then you're gonna get it, more, more ways than one. Do not ask the developer. Now, here's where we, we got this intersection, quarter of a mile away, it's a terrible intersection. It's awful. You can't ask the developer to go down there and fix that intersection. The only thing he can do, the only thing you can ask him to do, is that part of the road right in front of the development, you may do something really outrageous, like ask for the turning lane. And that's it. That's it. You can't make him ask to put in money to help improve that intersection, improve that intersection. That's offside. And again, you know, if you go and you've done a study that says that infrastructure of the city is lacking in, you know, that intersection is, you know, level of service depth, which I don't think it gets worse much than that down through there. We cannot allow, and the study has to say, we cannot allow any more traffic going through that intersection. Any, any traffic generated through that intersection, or naturally, you're gonna have traffic. But, you know, you can do a premature development, say, okay, we're not gonna approve this development until that intersection is improved. You know, it may be a year, maybe five years, but, you know, when that intersection improvement is, is done, then bring your development back and we'll reconsider. You can turn, delay something, basically turn it down, back up there, but you can't ask them But you can't ask them at the same time, say, "But we'll approve this, you'll approve this one." If you don't, go down there and do that.
All right, Sam, let me ask you a question. So in this, in this, the beneficial interest that the city would get is if they ask to do a lane like that. Well, they didn't ask for that. But in terms of a school being built, the city doesn't fund schools, so there's no beneficial interest? How could it be a taking if it hasn't received an interest?
Because it's a public, you know, all the school children didn't show up, go to, to that school, probably. So there is an interest there, even though the city does not operate the schools. Both cities, now, there are cities that take care of it, you know? But the city does not operate a school system. But it's still of beneficial interest to the city to have their kids, you know, at that particular school area, you know, there. So even though it's not yours, you're still, as a public entity, asking for something going to another public entity that, that should have no bearing on whether or not you approve something. It is not one of those, you know, "I give you X if you approve this." Anything that relates to, "I give you something in exchange for a permit, I give you something in exchange for approval," is going to be very suspicious as a taking. In other words, it will be a take. You know, governments can ask for things, but it has to be based on what's called a proportional proportionality in a central nexus. It's got to be connected to what the developments in, infrastructure. What they're asking to do is to have an impact on the infrastructure. And you can only ask them to make an improvement based upon that particular impact. That's a, unless you have some really, you know, I'm not saying you don't, you have to have some really great engineers to be able to figure out capacity and how much, you know, that impact is going to be upon that particular infrastructure. You know, what is the bare minimum you can do to mitigate, mitigate that impact? The law allows you to do that, but it is so, so concise that it's hard to prove. As a matter of fact, you know, one of the lead cases was, was out in Taggart, Oregon. Tigger, something they call it, Tigger ties Oregon. And what it was, was a couple owned a hardware store. And they say it, the husband died, and the little old lady with the tennis shoes owned the hardware store. And what the city wanted, they wanted to have a permit to expand the hardware store and expand a gravel lot for parking. And what the city said, and these are good, they're good public policy, okay? Good public policy. River, which they call the river, we call it the creek, ran behind the property. They wanted flood plain easement on that, on that body of water, along with a bicycle and pedestrian trail. Now, who can argue that it's not public, good public policy to have a bicycle and pedestrian trail going through the city? Who can argue that floodway protection, flood plain protection is not a good public policy? But you shouldn't ask the developer to give me those easements, give me that property in exchange for, you know, a building permit. Now, this, this is where little old ladies come in. She lost in every court in the state of Oregon. Every court. She went, and of course, she had some help by this time. She went to the federal district court, lost in the federal district court, went to the court of appeals, lost in the court of appeals. She ended up in the United States Supreme Court, and she won. She won, and that was a major man-use case on takings. It came out of the little old lady intentions. She wouldn't knuckle under to the city. Because she could have given them that property, but nobody did. Not going to hurt her down through there, was what she had. But she wasn't going to be intimidated. That's why you don't mess around with little old ladies intentions. That bitching at the time. But takings are one of those things that, there's a whole litany of taking cases.
You said one thing you were talking about required nothing but the turning lanes in front of the road.
Yeah.
The developer, he's talking about, got another pinnacle on that. Their traffic study said that they had to hang a turning lane on about four different streets going a half a mile down and improving an intersection. And they offered to fix all that, put a turning lane for a half a mile down, 41A.
They can offer all they want to, but you can't require. Once you require that, then, you know, they're going to start hollering taking.
I thought you said they could turn it down because of infrastructure.
You can. I was saying...
If the developer says, "I will take care of the infrastructure, I'll improve your sewer lines, or I'll wind your own."
That is something that the city council and the, and the developer have to deal with, not based upon the planning commission's approval of that flat. The planning commission can do a study saying, "Here is the infrastructure problems within the city. Here are the infrastructure problems within the county." You have to have that study done that shows here are the problem areas. Now, if the developer knows that, he can deal directly with the city council. City council's not the planning commission, they're not the ones going to approve the flat. The planning commission should have nothing to do with that requirement of the improvement of the infrastructure. It should not be part of their discussion with it. Now, once the deal is cut with the city council, okay? Once that infrastructure deal, they're doing the improvements. Then, when they bring the flat up, then they can show, "Well, we, the planning commission didn't require that, but it's already in the works, it's already scheduled to do it." So, you know, they can base it on that. But it is not based upon the planning commission asking for that to be done or required to be done. It's already a done deal, and they're taking, taking it. That's where the fine line is. Where the planning commission, you know, it's one of those fine lines. It looks like, you know, is there a real difference? Well, yeah. Depends on who you're dealing with. Developer deals with the city council. He's not dealing with the planning commission, who is telling them, "You got to do this, or we won't approve your flat." Okay? Once the planning commission starts into the deal of, you know, you've got to build this intersection a half mile down the road, you've got to, you know, add to, you know, the sewer treatment plant, or you've got to run a sewer line, you know, another quarter of a mile down this way. You know? I'm not an engineer, thank goodness. But I have seen water lines go from a six-inch water line...
Yeah.
Tap into a four-inch water line, tap into a two-inch water line, but then comes back in and taps into another four-inch water line, and in front of the property is a six-inch water line. Your requirement is to tap into and run a six-inch water line. Uh-uh. That's not the requirement, it's the fire flow. Because when you turn on the water in that new development, because of the six-inch, four-inch situation, you're still getting a drip of water. You're not getting a flow. So, you know, you've got to know what, in your regulations, you've got to know, when you say, "I need a six-inch water line," you got to say, "I've got to have a fire flow." So those, those are all things, if you don't have it, then that's a reason to delay the project. Because there's nothing worse than the fire department coming out there and hooking up to a fire plug and there being no water coming out of it. And you need to inspect these things. I went with a building inspector one time. It was a county. They were driving off the existing county road. There was an existing county water line. All they had to do was put fire hydrants, or their requirements. They were doing it in sections. We went out there, inspected, first inspection went out, there was a fire hydrant. Couple of months later, they did section two. We went out there, see where the second fire hydrant was placed. We go down the road, first fire hydrant was gone. Second fire hydrant was put in, except it was the first fire hydrant. They never, they never hooked it up. They literally put it in the ground, picked it up, and moved it. You've got to, you know, you've got to inspect, you've got to have people that will, that know what they're doing to look at these type of issues. I'm not saying developers approve it, but every now and then, somebody wants to save a dollar.
So if we can turn them down on infrastructure, why can't we turn them down, we don't have enough school space or enough water available out of Duck River?
Well, what you have to do there is have the study saying, "If this is it, if you're going to turn them down, then you're going to have to turn everybody down, okay? Because you're going to have to have the study done that says, 'We are at capacity of schools, or we are at capacity of water treatment. We can't allow any more hookups because of, you know, the flow out of Duck River or whatever you're using until we find another source of water.'" We get, it's premature development to, to, and again, you have to base it upon a study. It's premature development to allow this development to occur at that one time. Now, you know, that's a legal thing you can do, but it has to be based upon the study. You don't have the study, you just can't say, you know, "We don't have a lot of water, so we're not going to approve this." You know? You're not saying we're going to turn it down forever. We're not basing upon the fact that, you know, you're going to have to do, go out there and find some more water, but basing upon the existing conditions that our infrastructure will not allow. Under the statute, it says, "We can do a study on the infrastructure to support the development." If the development can't be supported, it's premature development, which the law allows you to say, premature development, we can approve it at this time. Most people don't do that simply because they don't have the study. The law allows you to do the study, but they don't have the study. You know, schools, schools are infrastructure. Just like a water line, a sewer line, you know? The school system is an infrastructure. You can't tell people, "Don't have no more kids." Don't be good, but if I'm doing, not good. All right. Oh, thank you. I'm, well, I'm sitting here. Y'all, y'all, y'all. You done? Can I help you with the port, you guys out on there?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Very good, very good.
Thank you, Sam.
Again, I hope the council can work.